Good evening, everybody. This is the FBI.
You will let us know.
Welcome. I would like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome to May Township's 168th Annual Town Meeting. First off, I would like to have Boy Scout Troop One from Park Ridge come up to present colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and post your colors. Color guard, attention. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Prepare to post the colors. Hands slater hand over heart. Post. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Return to ranks. About face. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Color guard is dismissed. You may be seated.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for not stabbing me with those extra long poles. I know they're a little hard to maneuver in tight spaces. The purpose of this meeting, as most of you know, is to inform the electorate of our township's financial status and to act upon certain resolutions to be presented at this meeting. But first, I would like to introduce my most efficient staff. My deputy clerks Rosalind Huber, Ron Roy, Dan Grebiksen, and my chief deputy clerk, Yasha Titek. These employees are responsible for making my office run and operate so smoothly. Thank you all. I'm proud to announce that in the 2017 fiscal year, my office processed 3,753 passport applications and 11,916 Cook County vehicle stickers, once again proving how hard my staff works on a daily basis. Now, I'd like to introduce your elected officials, starting with the trustees. We have the Honorable Kimberly Jones, the Honorable David Carabota, the Honorable Claire McKenzie, and the Honorable Susan Sweet. Our Highway Commissioner, the Honorable Walter Kuzemirczek, and unfortunately, our assessor, Susan Moreland Cry, is home. Sounds like has the stomach flu. So she sends her regards, and we certainly wish that she gets well. Last but not least, is our supervisor, the Honorable Laura Morask. And then I also see in our audience, we have a couple past township officials here. We have Highway Commissioner Robert Prodziano, and my predecessor and friend, Clerk Gary K. Warner. That's all I see out there. So the first order of business is a selection of a nominee. I recognize trustee Kimberly Jones for the purpose of making a nomination.
It is my honor to nominate Peter Ryan for moderator this evening.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Having a first and a second, motion to close the nominations. All in favor, show your cards. Peter Ryan, if you will step up, I will swear you in. First time I get to swear somebody in. Is that it?
Not the first time I've been sworn in.
Raise your right hand. I, Peter Ryan.
I, Peter Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Of moderator at this town meeting.
Of moderator at this town meeting.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Can I sit down?
You can sit down.
Okay. Is there a spring in the seat? You sure you checked that?
It's in there.
Thank you, best of all. I would like to... Pick my glasses out so I can see what the heck you marked down.
I wanted to just say that I also was a trustee here a number of years ago. See some old friends and see some new friends.
All right. I was gonna mention that and forgot before I had the nomination.
My apologies.
It's okay. I'm stepping up here from what I understand in terms of the office.
All right. I would like to appoint a columnistarian. I would like to have attorney, township attorney, Dan Dodd be our columnistarian today.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Here, my pleasure.
You've ever done this before?
A few times.
Oh, yeah. All right. Make sure. Should I call you Clerk Giallamis, or should I just call you Peter? Either, whatever you want.
Or Mr. Clerk.
Mr. any, any of the three will suffice.
All right, Peter, I'm just gonna ask you, Peter, if you would present the minutes of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting.
It would be my pleasure. The minutes have been distributed prior to the meeting. We ask that the meeting minutes be waived and the minutes be approved as submitted.
As for motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes. Wait until the minutes.
A second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any additions and/or subtractions or corrections? Okay. I please, you call the vote. Please vote for the show of your cards. Like that's the majority. So the motion's passed. Peter, were there any special board meetings held during this last year, 2017?
Yes, we held two special meetings. The first board, special board meeting was held on December 19, 2017. This meeting was held for the sole purpose to discuss and adopt the General Town Fund, General Assistance, and Road District Tax Levies for the year 2017. The second special board meeting was held on February 12, 2018. This meeting was held to go to closed session for the sole purpose of discussion of performance and compensation of specific employees in May Township.
Thank you. Peter, if the annual financial reports for the General Town Fund, General Assistant Fund, and Road and Bridge Fund were distributed prior to this meeting today?
Yes, the annual financial reports were distributed before the Annual Town Meeting.
Supervisor Morask. Could you give your annual report? And please introduce your township's staff.
Thank you, moderator, Peter Ryan. Hi, folks. My name is Laura Morask, and I'm your township supervisor. I welcome everyone here tonight for the 168th May Township Annual Town Meeting in order to share our accomplishments and our services that the township offered this past year. We had many firsts thanks to... Thank you, Yasha. As I said, we had many firsts thanks to the dedicated staff and our very caring elected board members. My goal this year for my administration was finding innovative ways to streamline and cut costs by creating new efficiencies and increasing our quality of services and the amount of residents who use them. I am extremely proud of our entire staff. They do their jobs with the utmost professionalism, and every single one of them took on additional new duties. And no question, the township. First of all, I want to talk about the administration team. In my opinion, the administration team is the heart and the soul of daily operations. They take care of everybody else. First, I would like to recognize Administrative Assistant Doreen Crowe, who is... Wait till I never rise. Administrative Assistant Doreen Crowe assists the entire board to help them do their job in addition to assisting me on a daily basis. She is the first line of help for residents who call, needing help for any matter, using almost superhuman abilities to track down whatever is needed. Like many others, Doreen took on more than just her regular duties. In May, as soon as we hit the ground, she started intensive research on one of the proudest initiatives that we have done, which is the videotaping of all of our meetings. We are, in my research, only one of two townships who videotape township meetings on a regular basis. She also did two very large projects for the unincorporated area. She coordinated and hosted and attended the CMAP inter-agency meetings, which many of our trustees went to, as well as taking on the fourth electrical aggregation program for the unincorporated, thereby saving electrical costs for our residents. Now, Doreen, will you please rise? Now can you guys rise? Next is our exceptional administrator, Dana Berman, who has served the township for 22 years. 13 as administrator. Dana coordinated the transition of a new board, including the officials swearing in and the fantastic volunteer reception, just to name a few events, while in charge of personnel and daily operations. Some notable endeavors, though, that were headed by Dana were the first website revamp committee that we've had in 15 years, and the inaugural township videotaping committee. Working in tandem, these two committees increased transparency and ease of use, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. Together with her deputy, Victoria Rizzo, Dana wrote various and numerous RFPs for auditor, personnel manual, attorney, prepared levies, budgets, and all research requested by the board. She also chaired the selection and nominating and wrote the candidacies of our record-setting eight statewide township awards. Dana, will you please rise? Vicki, I'm gonna call her Vicki, because that's what I call her. Vicki Rizzo developed and implemented a streamlined computerized procurement system, saving the township thousands of dollars. She coordinated the personnel manual rewrite. Along with Denise Jadko, she trained all of our employees on our new updated phone and computerized logging system, both saving thousands of hours in productivity and thousands of dollars. And it now increases the ability of any resident to reach anyone directly at Town Hall. Aye. And aye. Denise Jadko is our finance and personnel director. She has tirelessly made herself available to the entire board for all financial and personnel matters, and each month attends every board meeting, every special board meeting, to answer any and all bill pay and/or financial questions. Can those three, or Vicki and Denise, can you please rise? Our admin team is rounded out by our front desk information person, Tracy Cummings, who also could not be here tonight due to illness. We're very proud to be one of the few government who still answers the call, and I think that's a great thing. Our maintenance department, with Jessica Bott, retiring director Dave Ginuta, part-time Carl Horzowski, they too took on additional duties. Jessica doubles as homeowner at board meetings, and our newly appointed interim maintenance director, Mike Saman, is still handling voter enforcement while ensuring a smooth transition. Our unplanned intern Rebecca Baron assists everyone. Can those people please rise? Mike Saman's in the back. I want to give you a quick year in review. Just some of the highlights as I bring in these anniversary pens that are so nice to have here. June saw our annual, our sixth annual shredding event, which handled a record amount of residents. In June, we also completely revamped the Mainly News. We reduced its cost while simultaneously increasing the amount of issues to more timely alert residents of important items. We did that by cleaning up the distribution list and increasing solicitation of the advertising sponsors. So you now get summer when it's summer and fall when it's fall. In July, the township, the highway department, and the Office of Emergency Management banded together to do a cooperative to create the first-ever flood protocol. We made a computerized system for a request to the governor's office for declaration of emergency disaster. We stacked free sandbags and flood kits at Town Hall, and we use our township radio station so that we can broadcast immediate updates as well as area closings that are in the township. Also in July, we participated in the perennial popular Taste of Park Ridge, where we ran the Senior Bingo, the senior movie, at the Pickway. The Office of Emergency Management demonstrated lifesaving techniques to a capacity crowd while doing traffic control, and we sponsored the very popular Beer Tent on Friday night. On August 3, we partnered with the Gulf Main Park District for our largest-ever national night outing against crime. This nearly event is now amongst the most preeminent national night outs, reflecting our commitment to ridding our area of gangs and drugs. With Clerk Giallamis's leadership, we set a record of quality and quantity for the posters submitted by the area youth, who win savings funds, and they see their artwork posted at the township or at my office. Thanks to Clerk Giallamis, the Cook County sheriffs, Penny Maytech, as well as all of our other sheriffs, the North Main Fire District, all of our elected board members who dove right in and participated, as well as our staff who are working to make this a very successful event. August was the inaugural month for our first videotaped board meeting. This cost us $495, the cost of a camera, and the commitment of our in-house mainstay person, who is Manning, I'll introduce him later, but Rich Lyons, who wears, doubles as our website administrator. Rich did an incredible job, developing an agenda indexing system, the ability to post our board packets, and setting up free live streaming that will be coming in the near future. And for those of you who, I mean, you don't have to all turn around en masse, but we have it up on the whiteboard with the website. This weekend is getting transit so that you can see the front page of it on the whiteboard. In the fall, our new board did an excellent job in our numerous agency funding meetings. Thus, we were able to fund over 20 very worthy agencies, meaning strict objective criteria, all coordinated by Hassan Abukhati, our agency director. Our board excelled at training and availed themselves of the educational opportunities at the Toy Conference in November. Everyone also willingly participated in lowering the per diem travel expense at my suggestion to reflect actual receipts, again in saving money, as well as carpooling to save mileage for investments. Winter saw us all come together to provide a large amount of fully donated Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday baskets to the area financially needy residents. We held the first-ever pre-levee informational meeting, as well as our regular levy meetings. On the lighter note, we all enjoyed our first-ever in-house, completely free holiday celebration. In January, we unveiled our new website, which is a modernized, enhanced website courtesy of our tech whiz extraordinaire, who, John Hamberby, who could not be here tonight. As a department, was tasked with revamping and rewriting their content. We now will have interactive PDFs for forms, we will have applications, increased space, ability, and ease of use to find financial data, as well as the ability of every resident to sign up for electronic applications, department newsletters, and interactive content. This will be, as I said, transferred over this weekend. In January, Dana, myself, and all the department head, started the process of developing a completely revised, revamped, and reduced preliminary budget, keeping my promise to the public, a departmental budget reductions of over 10% or more, utilizing historical actual data while simultaneously realizing the cost savings in all of the new efficiencies staff and I and the board implemented. Now, I want to talk a little bit about each office. Our assessor's office continues to administer the rules and regulations and statutes of the Cook County Assessor. This office assisted over 15,649 residents, including processing homeowners, senior freaks, disabled persons, and disabled veterans, et cetera, and an increase in appeals for a mandatory assessment year, so a total of 1,916 appeals, which were processed for 2017 to both the Cook County Assessor and the Cook County Board of Review. 4,904 building permits were submitted to the Cook County Assessor's office to ensure tax revenue was captured and placed onto the rolls. We assisted 421 residents in completing certificate of error paperwork, allowing for a read-up for missed exemptions in the total amount of $623,000. This year, the Assessor's office began tracking the total number of name, address, and change applications for residents to make sure their name appears correctly on their property taxable, and that you're not paying your resident, your neighbor's property taxable. 195 applications were completed. We continue to assist senior citizens with the completion of the Senior Citizen Real Estate Tax Deferral Program offered through the Cook County Treasurer. I know that Assessor Moreland Cry could not be here. I would like Chief Deputy Liz Coy and her entire department to please rise for a round of applause. Our clerk's office processed four voter registrations, 11,916 Cook County vehicle stickers, 24 handicap parking carts, 113 hunting and fishing licenses, 322 RTA passes, and 3,757 passport applications. They have processed 1,533 Mainlines tickets, 1,593 Republic Refuse Yard Waste Acts, and 155 Notary Public requests. Chief Deputy Clerk Yasha Titek handled numerous FOIA requests within the shortest amount of statutory time. She too took on additional responsibilities, handling all internal and external document requests, servicing an increased amount of residents while reducing budget and actual expenses. Can the clerk's department please rise? Good evening. The mainstreamers continue to be a pillar in the community. They provide recreational and educational events for seniors for 55 years of age and older. Last year, 2,590 mainstreamers participated in at least one of the 47 day trips that featured theaters, museums, boat rides, baseball outings, and other fun destinations. They offered 10 monthly luncheons, a holiday luncheon, and a New Year's Eve celebration attended by 2,002, yeah, 2,002 mainstreamers, and many of our newly elected and formerly elected board members. 158 members attended Polish Fest, which featured traditional Polish food. 155 May Township residents reached the golden age of nine and attended the 90-plus birthday celebration at the Statoque, which is one of my personal favorites. And they also were offered various recreational fitness and educational programs, including Zumba, yoga, health programs, book club, and movie date. They continue to host the community premier Swing Into Spring Senior Expo at the Golf Mill Shopping Center, which is held on Friday, April 20. So I invite all of you to attend. Last, this allows our seniors to connect with local vendors in the May Township area. There were over 1,800 attendees last year. Marie Deschowsky became our new director in December. Despite staff consolidation, which saved the township $113,000, the department, you may clap. The department continued to grow new and exciting events while increasing membership and sponsors to offset any township costs. I'm also proud to say that Marie won the statewide award for Best Senior Staff Member. May Township Recovery Connection is one of our proudest of J. With only a part-time director, Marty Hook, one full-time employee, and one part-time employee, they became a national model for directed effective response to the opioid crisis. Their weekly meeting attendance surpassing a year total of 2,213, representing 85% increase from the year before. This needed service addresses recovering alcoholic and drug addicts from the age of 18 to 32, looking for a safe and drug-free way to socialize. This year, they formed numerous partnerships that were of the healthy body, healthy mind theory. Friday night pre-meeting yoga, 217 attendees. The first-ever dual diagnosis program, which we partnered with Chicago Behavioral Health shouldering the cops, 416 attendees. They formed partnerships with Maryville Gateway and Main East to create sober volleyball and Saturday CrossFit, having 290 and 107 participants respectively. Their extensive content was grew by 77% to a total of 297. Besides the Friday night evening meetings, they have sponsored numerous other events, and amazing, we have procured a total of 26 dots for unemployed participants. and amazingly, we have procured a total of 26 jobs for unemployed participants. The Recovery Connections' unique program was recognized as the statewide best township program in Illinois this past year. Our Office of Emergency Management handled 48 events, blocking 1,846 and a half volunteer hours. These included National Night Out Against Crime, Taste of Park Ridge, Senior Expo, the annual garage sale, the annual shredding event, the Memorial Day and Fourth of July parades, Touch a Truck, the Stevenson School Fire Drills and Lockdown Drills, the North Main Fire Protection District Open House, and Traffic Control at Town Hall for the sale of county vehicle stickers and the LIHE program. Most importantly, they taught 240 people how to save a life in five minutes with hands-only CPO, which is a program that we're going to offer here at the township, so that you all can see this amazing demonstration. They taught 150 people how to properly use a fire extinguisher, and they performed blood pressure checks on 255. This is all with one part-time employee, Dagmar Woodson, community staff, and her team. The General Assistance Department assisted 5,541 township residents as they interviewed and/or applied for the many programs that we have at Town Hall, including Senior Disabled and Veterans Advocacy Benefits, along with the state mandated General Assistance Program. They helped residents qualified for state and federal programs such as LIHE, which is an energy savings program, benefit access, and special referrals to the Social Security Administration for possible disabled individuals. Our popular coast-to-coast pharmaceutical assistance program saved our residents on prescription prices. Over the last year, they filled 3,143 prescriptions, which saved residents 68% and a total dollar amount of $222,270. The township received $2,900 in royalty programs, being completely free to residents and obviously the township. This is a win-win program. For any of you that need a card, we have them at Town Hall, and it does save up to 75% of your prescription costs, and many times is cheaper than your usual. The township, Carol Langen, Director of the Main Township Food Pantry, assisted 2,080 families this year. Thanks to the generosity of the community and the local Joel, we provided turkeys and hands for Thanksgiving and Christmas. We continued the paths for Coats partnerships with all of our local police departments. The local police departments collect gently used hourware, and Main Township serves as a distribution center in November. And we provided 250 families with warm winter wear this winter, which will never end. I'm in the West. Carol also initiated a partnership with Marianna's and the local police department called Stuff a Squad, which provides food to the needy residents. The theory that you put as much food in the squad as the squad can hold then gets donated to the food pantry. She also increased in partnership with Oakton Community College, she increased donations through the Empty Bowl Program, which I know many of our trustees attended and can attest to. We received from that a total of $3,858 in cash donations. She also partnered with the Vine Street Barbecue Committee, who very generously picked us as a donor, and received seven, almost $7,000 in donations. Can the General Assistance Department, with Marsha Morne, Director, and Carol Langen from the Food Pantry, please rise so that you can be recognized. Last, but certainly not least, in terms of departments, our Code Enforcement Officer, Mike Seman, implemented a Saturday pilot program, working four hours a Saturday a month to catch violators who are not normally caught during the week, and came up with this idea because he attends every Neighborhood Watch meet, and some residents and Highway Department staff suggested this. Mike also does, acts as a community liaison, and does daily tours of the area to remove unsightly garbage, working hand-in-hand with our garbage provider, Republic, our attorney, our Highway Department, and the community. Mike gave out 1,913 warnings for vehicle violations, property maintenance violations, garbage issues, and parking violations. A total of 139 tickets were eventually issued. We are reinstituting our monthly court date at the Stokie Courthouse to recoup unpaid ticket violations. This is a very important step in keeping our unincorporated area of over 33,000 residents debris and garbage-free. This evening, I would like to give some staff certain recognition for their years of service and dedication to the township. I'm going to call Peter Gilamis and Louz Menendez together for 10 years of service. Peter Gilamis is our clerk, Louz Menendez is our case manager and general assistant. Now, for 15 years of service, I would like to call up Chief Deputy Assessor Elizabeth Coy, Deputy Assessor Deborah Bather, and Food Pantry Director Carol Langen. And for 20 years of service, I would like to call up John Allred, who is a Senior Case Manager and Senior Analyst in our General Assistance Department. For retirements, we had Supervisor Carol Tesh, who retired on May 12 after 28 years of dedicated service. Is Carol there tonight? Clerk Gary K. Warner also retired on May 12 after 29 years of dedicated service.
Why don't you give him a flag?
Did you take him a flag for me?
I don't. I'm a good reporter. 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 You're going to break the ball. Director of Senior Services Department, Mary Swanson, retired on November 17 after 17 years of service. Director of Maintenance, Dave Genucek, will retire on April 17 after 17 years of service. And I would like to call up, out of his seat, former Township Attorney Dan Dowd, who also retired after 24 years as our Township Attorney on March 24, 2018. So. This is John Allred. All right, John, oh, here. Where is it? I got it. Do you remember where it is? It's right here. You got hard.
I'm not Jerry Warner.
We wish them all well in their retirements. We had some promotions. Marie Deschowsky was promoted to Director of the Mainstreamer Department on November 28, 2017. She started in the township in 2002, and as new director was able to consolidate her department, saving $113,000. Mike Seman was promoted to Interim Director of our Maintenance Department on March 24, 2018, where he is busy revamping the Maintenance Department and agreeing to keep red duties that were previously part of the Code Enforcement check. This move saved the township over $50,000. This year, we also welcomed trustees David Carabata, Claire McKenzie, and Susan Sweeney, who we appreciate jumped right into their jobs. They participated in many of the above programs, and they have served on various committees. So can you give all of these people around the. One more sip of water. So, we've completed another successful year in service to our residents. We are operating under the tax cap and completely debt-free. We managed to reduce our levy while putting a litany of new efficiencies and cost savings directives in place. We serviced an increase of residents while reducing further layers of inefficient red tape, reducing our expenses and our budget. We think we are continuing on a sound fiscal direction. In my first year as supervisor, we had many, many firsts. It was the first time videotape, the first revamp of the website in 15 years, the first fully automated personnel login, the first time board packets and agendas were online and in mix, the first time we conducted performance-based individual personnel reviews, the first time we lowered elected official salaries by 25%, the first time we consolidated numerous positions, saving thousands while helping more residents, the first time we won eight Township State Awards, the first time I've gone this long without interruption. Sorry, I just had to go and, it's a joke. Once again, we have demonstrated that township government, we believe, is the closest to the people, and therefore the most efficient and effective form of government. And thank you all for participating in our meetings. We really appreciate the increased attendance at all our meetings and tonight, and giving us feedback to better serve you and the residents. Thank you.
Peter, I think it's time for that special, Sergeant Karen Leder Service Award.
Just a real quick synopsis on Sergeant Karen Leder, who the award is named after. She was our township liaison with the Cook County Sheriff's Department here for several years, and really made a profound impact in the time that she was here. She was just a really gregarious, wonderful person. She really cared a lot about the community and the residents here. So when she untied me back several years back and wanted to do something in her honor, and that's why we came up with this award, to honor other good citizens within the township. And it's my pleasure to announce that this year, that citizen is Bob Neal, a father of one. He has also been a foster parent to 38 children over the years. Yes, 38. Being a father figure and positive role model to all of them. Bob had a 40-year career with the Displanes Police Department, both as an officer and a court liaison. His interaction with the local youth began in 1971, when he became Displanes Police Department's Officer Fred, the very first Officer Fred. And not to date myself, but I was a middle schooler at West School in the mid-1970s. I remember very much the first time he came in to talk to our class, so I've known him for quite a while. A year later, he discovered the joys of professional clowning. Bob is very active and has had leadership roles in national and international clowning organizations, including serving on the Board of Directors of the World Clown Association. He often donates his clowning time to civic events and churches. Bob connects incredibly well with children, and has entertained countless people, both young and old, with his antics and special magic. As a longtime Displanes resident, Bob has deep ties with the Main Township community, has invested much of himself to make it a better place to live and work. Bob volunteers in many areas and dedicates countless hours to improve Main Township, the Main Township community. Bob has served on the Displanes Youth Commission since 1973, and is currently the Vice Chairman. He's been a member of the Park Ridge Peer Jury Partnership for the past 12 years. He's been a past president of his church and on the Board of the Fair Foundation, which provides money to youth with drug and alcohol problems who don't have the funds for treatment. He has also served as Vice Chairman of the North Shore Division of the Illinois Police Association. He was a volunteer in Main Township's Main State Mentoring Program for five years. Bob is currently, Bob currently works as the Resource School Officer in Main Township High School, I mean West Township High School, where he is recognized by students as a trusted role model and confidant. Bob also volunteers for Operation North Pole, a charitable organization that works with children with life-threatening illnesses and their families. Bob exudes kindness and concern whether he is talking to a young person or to adults. He's a genuinely nice guy who cares for everyone in the community. He can put a smile on anyone's face, even when he's not dressed as a clown. So it's for those reasons, I would certainly love Bob to come up here and accept the Sergeant Karen's.[1770.32] favor. Bob, you already had your name. We're a little ahead of the game this year. You've already been added to the family, so you're going on the wall along with the past recipients.
Supervisor for us.
All right, I'm going to ask for resolution 2018-3, and I'll read it and then request moderator approval, and we'll request a motion in a second. It is hereby resolved and ordered by the electors present at the Annual Town Meeting of Main Township Health's 10th Day of April 2018, that the Township Fiscal Year shall be held on March 1, 2018, through February 28, 2019. Moderator?
Can I have a motion to establish a Township Fiscal Year to begin March 1, 2018, and end February 28, 2019, please?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for your second. Vote with a show of your cards, please. Looks like there's benefit in presenting. I think motion.
The next resolution, 2018-4, it is hereby resolved and ordered by the electors present at the Annual Town Meeting of Main Township Health's 10th Day of April 2018, that the next Main Township Annual Town Meeting shall be held on Tuesday, April 9, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Main Township Hall, Main Township Town Hall, 1700 Ballard Road, Park Ridge. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. May I please have the motion to schedule the next day Annual Town Meeting for April 9, 2019, 7:00 PM at the Town Hall? Thank you very much. Second? Did I hear second? Thank you very much for your second. Please show a vote by demonstrating your cards. Again, over 50%. Thank you for your vote.
Final resolution, number 2017-5, it is hereby resolved and ordered by the electors present at the Annual Town Meeting of Main Township Health's 10th Day of April 2018, that the moderator of this meeting be compensated for his or her services in the amount of $75. And I'm going to ask for someone to make a motion, so he doesn't have to ask. Let me motion in a second. Can everybody show their card? And that is passed.
Thank you very much. I would like to donate specifically moderator fee to Carol, so she has a fund whenever she's up against it and has nothing to solve a problem, that she, at her discretion, can have access to a credit of $75. Yeah, well, took my breath away. My mind went with it. Thank you. All right, um, let's see. Now, since the business meeting is now concluded, that's what I'm doing? All right. I believe that all the business scheduled for today has been concluded, and that will be the end of our meeting. The audience have any further comments this time? I have no comments. I'd make my comments. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
(laughter)
Thank you very much.
(applause)
Thank you very much.
(applause)
Yeah, well, took my breath away. My mind went with it. Thank you. All right, um, here, let's see.